Twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, City of Clayton Planning Commission meeting. I am Dan Foley and I'm the Vice Chair, filling in for David Bills tonight. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Mr. Bills? Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Muncy?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett? And Ms. Williams?
Here.
Thank you, and I think we need a motion to excuse two of our members this evening.
I'll do a motion to excuse Ms. Pritchett.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. So we have one item on the agenda tonight. It is case number PC-22-04, thirty-five-ten Sweet Potato Ridge Road, Sweet Potato Stables. And what I think I'll do first, Seth, I'll go ahead and ask you, if you would, to explain the case. Okay? For the oath, too? I do?
You need to do the procedures and oath, please, and then the minutes, and then...
Okay. Just kind of run through the meeting agenda, or just...or is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, I got it. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Gotcha. So what we'll do is, I'll go ahead and swear in anybody who wants to, who will be speaking tonight, and I'll kind of walk through the agenda. So if there's anybody in the audience who plans to speak on this item, could you just stand? And we'll raise your right hand? Okay, okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, all right. All right, so here's just the rundown of the meeting. We will, Seth will come up here in a second and just explain the case and explain what, you know, what's being asked of the Planning Commission this evening. Then what we'll do is, we'll ask, the Chair will ask the applicant if they like to add anything to what the staff presented. Then we will, we'll ask the commission members if they have any questions based upon what's been presented and if there's any comments from the applicant. Then we'll ask for a motion relating to the request. And then we do have just a couple rules around the public comment, just so you know. One is that each person will have three minutes to make comments. If your comment's been made by a previous speaker, please try not to tread of old ground too much. And then the third thing is, if you could direct your comment to the Planning Commission and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will also have a chance to respond to the comments received at the end once the floor's been closed to public comment. So Seth, we'll go ahead and we'll hear the case. I'm not doing too good here. Yeah, we do need to approve the minutes from May twenty-three, which was the last time that we met, May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, well, excuse me, I'm sorry. I move to approve the minutes from the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Vice Chair Foley, then if you could read into the record, just the case heading under new business.
Okay, we're hearing case number PC-22-04, under new business, thirty-five-ten Sweet Potato Ridge Road, Sweet Potato Stables. The request is for a zoning change and final development plan for the property at thirty-five-ten Sweet Potato Ridge Road, specifically for Sweet Potato Stables.
Thank you, Vice Chair Foley. Good evening, Planning Commission members. To introduce the application, you are hearing tonight application PC-22-04. It was received on August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, for rezoning and final development plan for Sweet Potato Stables. The applicant is Corinne Bryan and Daniel Annoi. They are the property owners. A public notice was printed in the Brookville Star on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and letters to the property owners within three hundred feet of the site were postmarked and mailed on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. The location of Sweet Potato Stables is thirty-five-ten Sweet Potato Ridge Road, on the south side of Sweet Potato Ridge Road, east of South Old Mill Road. Parcel number is M-sixty-zero-three-zero-one-one-zero-zero-three-zero, and has an area of five-point-seven acres. The current zoning of parcel, of the parcel is RSD, Residential Single Unit District. Staff has reviewed and provided to each Planning Commission member the following documents: the application, the letter of intent, narrative statement, site plan, and pictures of the existing horse stable use. Next slide. This is the zoning and the surrounding area. The red dot represents the location of the applicant's property. And you can see that all of the properties surrounding their property is also zoned RSD for Residential Single Unit District, though in use they are, many are farm fields. To the north of Sweet Potato Ridge Road is property is located in the City of Union. Next slide. And again, this is just a close-up of the subject location. Again, red dot representing the applicant's property. On there, you can see their house, their driveway, the barn, the riding arena, which is enclosed in fencing, and the pasture behind. Next slide. And this is the site plan official, officially, that was submitted with the application. Again, kind of labeling the different areas of the property. Next slide. I'd like to analyze the request for the rezoning. The applicant requests approval to rezone property from RSD Residential Single Unit District to PDD, that's Planned Development District. The property is located within the Clayton Improvement District Number One, CID-one. Within that text, in the Planning and Zoning Code, it states that all rezonings within the CID-one for property of five acres or more is required to be PDD. Existing zoning allows a number of permitted and conditional uses. They've been outlined in your staff reports, but I'll summarize here. Permitted uses would include residential, residential care facility, hobby farm, backyard farm, public health safety facility, outdoor recreational facility, golf course, just to name a few. And then conditional uses, these would be uses that need special approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals and may have conditions attached to them as part of that review. Would be things like attached, single-family dwellings, so it's a more of a multifamily situation, in-home child daycare, halfway house, wireless service facility, cell tower, that kind of thing. And again, just to name a few for conditional uses. The proposed zoning is a PDD for the existing uses of the property, which include the applicant's single-family residence, the horse barn for boarding horses that both they own personally and belong to other people, an outdoor riding arena that the applicant's customers can use to ride their horses as well. And then, of course, there's the pasture to the rear. To looking, looking at the final development plan, there's no new development proposed with the application. So the request for a final development plan approval in effect is to permit the existing use of the property. Any future modifications to the use of the property, if this is approved, would require a PDD modification that would have to be heard both by Planning Commission and City Council. So it would come back through this process. The applicant has an existing residence, horse barn, outdoor riding arena, and pasture, as I mentioned. The reason for the rezoning and final development plan approval request is because the current zoning, RSD, does not permit the applicant to board horses for other people. So the commercial aspect of the use is not permitted in the RSD. The horse barn has capacity to board five horses, including the applicant's own. The outdoor riding arena is ninety feet wide by one-hundred-and-forty feet deep. That's about twelve-thousand-six-hundred square feet in area. There is some existing lighting on the barn, in front and back, and at the riding arena there are four one-hundred-watt LED lights that are mounted to a twelve-foot tall post to light up the arena for nighttime riding. There is a pasture area located behind the outdoor riding arena. Next slide. After review and consideration of the rezoning and final development plan application for Sweet Potato Stables, staff does recommend that Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval to City Council as submitted. Next slide. And for your questions and discussion, I'll leave up some pictures that we received, and they're in your packets as well, showing the pasture and the riding arena and the barn for the use. And that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. I think at this point, we'll ask the applicant if they would like to add anything to what the staff presented.
I'm not familiar with this process, so thank you for bearing with us and thank you for having us tonight. So we bought this property a year and couple months ago because it was a horse property, and we are horse lovers. And so everything was there. All we did is improve and maintain a whole lot. This is my husband, Daniel, and he spends all his time fixing, and I do the playing, just to give you the context. But, and by fluke, someone stopped by one day and said, "Do you board horses?" Because from the road, they could see the arena, and it's pretty awesome property. So we said, "Well, we don't really think about boarding yet, but, you know, let us see what we can do." We ended up helping this person for a couple months, and then winter came, and nobody wants to move their horses during the winter. But then this spring, a few people came again, and Shirley is here tonight, she's one of our boarder. And that's how Sweet Potato Stables really started up. So we have eight stalls, but we are willing to board up to five horses only because we want room for our own. And also, we have insurance for, we can increase the insurance, but the way it works is you have up to five, it's a certain price, it's quite expensive, and then six to nine is another price, and so forth. So because we are full-time workers as well, and this is just for fun and be around like-minded people, we don't want to do any more than five boarding, and also, we don't plan on adding any buildings. It's already a lot of work, but it's also a lot of fun. So one of the things that I'm proud of about Sweet Potato Stables is we created a really cool environment for people. Sometimes people just stop by to say hi or to inquire, "Can I volunteer with you?" Even though we don't add any advertisement or anything. So as an example, we have two Northmont Middle Schoolers that stopped by and said, "I want to learn about horses, I want to be around horses, I want to see if farming is an option for me as a career. Can I please work at your barn?" And so we really take, I'm an educator, I work at UD, so we really take the mentorship approach. And so those two students, Amy and Devin, work alongside with Daniel and really get the mentorship, and they sort of blossom with us. It's not like we do anything special, but they talk, they engage, they are happy. And a lot of times, the parents tell us, "Well, my kid has social anxiety, how do you do it?" So I'm really proud of that because that's not, it's never been the intent, but it's coming to us. And as an educator, I love to see kids out of trouble, and I love to see that they feel comfortable at Sweet Potato Stables. And then we have the adult volunteer, like Kimberly, that showed us, showed up one day too, and I'm like, "Ah, I'm about to go to a meeting." But she has done beautiful, beautiful, amazing, I should have taken a picture, signs for the horses' stall. So they all have their name, and it's in wood, and it's just that beautiful thing. So, thank you so much again. And so that's an aspect of the boarding I've never experienced anywhere where I boarded. And as I mentioned in my application, my horse is eighteen, and I've had him for seventeen years. And so, and we moved across the states a lot. So that means I went to many barns. And that community aspect, that environment in which horses are healthy and happy, I don't know if you know anything about horses, but it's kind of like us. If they're not happy, you see it, they develop health issues, it's kind of very obvious. But I'm proud to say that the horses in, under our care, they look great, and they seem happy, and so that makes me happy, as well as being around people like Kimberly and Mike and Shirley. They really brighten my day when they come and enjoy our space. So that's all I have. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
You've made me happy just hearing this, by the way. I want to say that, too. I really mean that. This is wonderful. Could, let's see, I'll ask the commission members if they have any questions.
I just wanted to say that I thought your application was very thorough from, you know, my limited experience on this committee, but I appreciated all the information that you put in here. I did have a question, though, in a couple of the letters of recommendation. It did talk about expansion later on. I know that's not part of this application, but is there a possibility for expansion in the future?
So I don't recall which letter said that.
For the Corcoran's?
It was yes.
Okay.
I misunderstood. I'll be happy to answer your question if you'd like. You're welcome.
So, like I said, we are two, and great people that are part of the Sweet Potato Stables family. We have no intention of building anything more. If we were to, we would have to buy property around, and we know it's not an option. So we have our hands full, and I think we want to keep doing a good job and keep people happy and horses happy. And if we add, there's always a danger of losing that quality. I mean, I spend every morning with the horses, you know, I feed, that's my chores, I handle them, check them, and that's kind of my happy moment in the morning. And I don't think many people take that time. So I'd like to keep what we have because it's fairly unique. Thank you for asking, though.
You're welcome, and thank you.
I think all we got were letters in support of your application. Has there been any neighbors who haven't liked certain aspects of your business or the stables or anything? Because, and it's okay if they're not, I'm just curious.
No, I mean, that's fair. And I would say, I think our neighbors loved us because we fixed the fence for them, and we checked them, and we do all the work, and they're like, "Oh, I got a new fence today! Thanks, Daniel." And they come at the fence and see the horses as well. And as you saw, a lot of them are anyway, fields or another field just for riding motorcycle kind of thing. So, yeah, they, we have not, and I would tell you, but we haven't had any complaints at all.
Mike, do you want to answer Kim's question?
Sure. Is there anyone else? Oh, sorry. Go. I'm sorry, to be able to get you on tape, we have to have you at the mic, please. And we have that during open...
I don't want to interrupt Corinne. When you'd like me to speak up, we have to.
We're going to open the floor to public comment in just a moment. You can speak at that time.
Okay. Sure. Can I step up?
Not yet.
Stay.
Right. Pull the bride along.
I didn't mean to cut you off either. Are you, anything that we need to know before we take a vote?
No, I think, like I said, everything I had to say is in the application, and I just wanted to bring the, a little forth what's unique about us. So I think I did that.
Okay, you did. Very good. And I would ask, if I could, Seth, did we have any comments from the public prior to the meeting about this, about this request?
I received no phone calls or letters, other than what you received in your packets, about the application, so. And then just wanted to note that you will, kind of next step would be to open the floor for public comments, allow public to speak, and then close that, and then you can kind of deliberate before your motion to...okay? All right, thanks.
Ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment.
I move that we open the floor for public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion.
Oh, do I have to open this floor? We just did that, right? We're good?
You just made a motion. Ask the Chief, your name and address.
Mike Corcoran, I'm at one forty-one Springhouse Drive, Englewood, Union, Ohio. And I can save the committee trouble right now. If you guys are already planning on voting yes, I won't bore you with details. If you want details, I'm happy to give them to you. I have been to this farm, I will tell you that, and I think Mr. Foley knows well, I have a long history with the City of Clayton. I built the original website for the City of Clayton. I've run, I was involved in the first campaign to get the first income tax levy passed, and I've been a long supporter of the City of Clayton. I have never stood before any council at City of Clayton, until today. And I will tell you, it's only because I believe in this. I have been to their farm. I have seen what they're doing. Ms. Williams, to your point exactly, in that letter, what I was suggesting was not an expansion of the property, but the potential of expansion of opportunities. What they have on their farm is absolutely amazing. I've never seen a place more clean, well-organized, it's an incredible property, they clearly have a love for this. I know personally, this is not a profitable thing for them, this is about a love of what they're doing. I'm suggesting to the City of Clayton that to grant what they're asking for is of no detriment to the city at all, in fact, just the opposite. It provides a potential for the city, it's the right thing for the city to do, there's no downside to this. I would definitely say, rezone so that they can, they can do what they want to do because it's just the right thing to do for the right people, for the right place. It would just be a benefit for the city. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to explain more. I don't want to belabor it because I think you guys are getting the sense of this. I think Corinne did a great job of explaining it. But I would highly recommend that you guys vote to let them do what they're asking to do because it's the right thing and it's going to be beneficial to the city. My wife will tell you, that's the shortest I ever explained something.
I'll ask for a motion. I'll ask for a motion to close the floor to public comments.
Eddie, one more time.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, please, please. Thank you. No, take your time.
My name is Shirley Dwinner from eighty-six-oh-five Horseshoe Bend Road, Leno Falls, and I want to say how important this is to people with horses, especially in my age. I had been a horse owner for over thirty years, and it came into my health where I could no longer take care of horses. And fortunately, I don't want to cry because this is, I found Corinne and Daniel, and they take wonderful care of my horse. I love the feel of community, and that's so important to me, to be around people that love horses. And they welcome me, I come on their property and don't leave till like nine o'clock at night, and that's okay with them. But I feel like I'm very welcome there, and I love being around other people with horses. So as I grow old, I still can ride my horse, and so thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Can I ask something?
Yes, yes, please, yeah.
I just, because I'm sure...
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Slipped home there.
And I would say, if there's no one else from the public to speak, if you could close the floor, and then Corinne can kind of respond to...
We'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public comment.
I'll make the motion to close the floor to public comment.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
No, I was just to Shirley's point. I love having Shirley around because her and I go riding on the trails all the time because Daniel wants to do a project and make things better all the time. So she's my partner in crime, and so if you go hiking on the trails and you see us, that would be why. It's always her and I. So I appreciate the company and learning from her, what she knows, we share a lot of things, and with other folks as well. So that's the community piece, that's so important. And one day, if you went, came to visit, you might see Shirley sit in the arena with a book or Bible and just enjoying the space. And that, as I work from home sometimes, and I saw that, and I was like, wow, that's exactly the kind of space we wanted to create. So I love it. Thank you for being part of the family.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion among the commission members?
I just have a couple questions, I think, or at least clarification. One, the reason we need this permit is because boarding is not, or sorry, the reason we need the modification is because boarding is not permitted in the RSD, but the PPD requires that it be limited to the boarding, to the stated uses. And if any other commercial use comes up, either by a future owner or the current property owners, they got to come back for a new modification, right?
Yeah, that's well put, Mr. Muncy. So they can have the large animals, they can have the horses on their property as a hobby farm, they can't have the commercial piece, and so that kind of dictates the need for the rezoning. The PDD is, if it's approved, it's an approval of a specific plan, meaning specific uses. So to your point, yes, if they added something commercial or they expanded on the uses at all, it would have to come back for a modification.
And then if they do intend to put another structure on the property, would they have to come back to do just a modification of the final use, or would that still be permitted as long as it meets all the other zoning requirements?
Yeah, I think if the uses don't change, I think they could, and they can, what they submit meets the zoning requirements, they wouldn't have to come back for a structure, but certainly for use changes.
Sounds good?
Yep.
And if, Daniel, you want to build some new more fencing, I think you're covered here, too, by the way, you're probably pretty good. Sounds like you've done a lot of work. I will say, that's a beautiful property, I mean, when I looked at the map, it obviously runs deep, but it's a beautiful piece of property from the PowerPoint slide. Yeah, yeah, very nice. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to, there's three potential motions. One would be to recommend approval, one would be to approval with conditions, or the third would be disapproval to the applicant's request.
Are there any conditions that you're needing, Seth?
From my perspective, I thought it could be recommended as submitted. If you guys have come up with anything from your, you know, from the information that you've heard, you would be able to add conditions if you'd like.
I'll make the motion to approve the application for resolution on case number PC-22-04 as submitted.
My second.
Okay, it's been, we have a motion in a second to approve PC-22-04 as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you, and well done. This is really, it's a beautiful piece of property, and it, given what we heard tonight, you're building community, too, which is very nice. So, well done. Okay.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.